Calling to order this meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom pursuant to government. Uh, presuming, this is the wrong, uh, I'm on this, I'm sorry. Uh, presuming to...
Pursuant?
Yeah, pursuant to whatever the act was that extended it. Um, so that board and committee members can participate remotely as well as members of the public. Uh, because we have a member of the board who is participating remotely tonight, we will be doing roll call votes, uh, in order to comply. So, uh, getting started on the agenda, first item up is public comments. Do we have anybody here from the public to talk about anything that is not on the agenda? All right, hearing nothing, we're moving forward. Uh, the next is minutes acceptance. So we have minutes that were provided to the planning board via email, and were also made available in the drive. Um, they were sent out, um, they were sent out today. So if people didn't have a chance to look at those, we can hold that until the next meeting. Um, I defer to the board on that. Just in case you didn't know.
I was able to read them.
Uh, Francois, are you ready to proceed with them?
Um, yes, did, did they change like in the last several hours or?
Uh, yeah, there was some more getting filled out on them. They only got completed four hours ago.
I see them now, okay, good. Uh, so would you need a motion to accept them?
Uh, yes, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the bidding minutes for March the fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Hearing a first.
As directed.
Hearing a first, do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, hearing a first and a second, calling discussion.
I do have a comment under section four, new business. Section A, master plan. Subpolet I, presentation. Subpolet one, Chairman Monroe. The second line says implementation committee. I, I think it's actually implementation committee, right?
Did I put the word in there?
Sounds plenty fun. I'm just opening that back up now, but that, that sounds reasonable.
Yes.
Okay, so. Okay, I got that.
Yes, I have that, I will fix that, I'm...
And that, that's the only item that I want you to have corrected on this meeting minutes.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments from the, the board on the minutes? Uh, all right, uh, I'm gonna call a vote by roll call, uh, recognizing that we do have a quorum of the one member that is present online. So, uh, let's start with online.
Yes, correct.
DAC I.
Uh, and Monroe I, the minutes are accepted. Uh, moving down on the agenda, we have new business. Uh, so we received, um, just to clarify for the benefit of the public, this is not a substantive discussion on the application. This is a procedural discussion on the application. Um, the substantive discussion is going to be in a public hearing that we're hopefully gonna talk about scheduling tonight. So we're here just to talk about this from a procedural standpoint and whether or not the application is complete. So with that said, um, uh, I, well, normally I would have the applicant come in and talk about it, but because we had a little bit of a, a process here, uh, Bill, can you actually? Well, I'll actually kick it off. So, uh, we have Paper Crane, uh, who has submitted a special permit application, along with the site plan for fifty-six Gardner Road. Um, the, the property has an existing special permit that was previously held by the, uh, that was previously issued by the board. The, uh, the permit had a three-year term on it. So we're here to talk about it again because the three years have passed. There were some meetings administratively between the office and between the applicant about the best way to approach this because, um, making somebody go through every single step of the, of the application, uh, with brand-new information seemed an awful lot like the doing of a useless thing. So we wanted to reference what had already been done as much as, as possible. And, um, we, we're here tonight to make sure that's appropriately, appropriately reflected in the, uh, the application and, uh, to hear briefly from the applicant and to hear briefly from Mr. Murray, uh, about, uh, whether or not he believes that the application is complete. So with that kicking it off, um, I guess actually let's go in the conventional order. Can the applicant introduce himself and just give us a, a little bit of information on what you're asking for?
Sure. Uh, I'll...
We all know you better introduce yourself than a...
Of course, uh, Bowie Berthold, Paper Crane, provisions, fifty-six Gardner Road. Uh, what you are holding is my application for a special permit for fifty-six Gardner Road for cultivation. Um, this is, it's, uh, it, I guess was going to be a renewal, but since there seemed to be no real renewal process, we went with this, uh, new application permit with basically all the information from the previous issued permit carrying over, at least that's what we had come to. So, um, that's what was submitted was a, um, basically a copy of the original special permit with a couple of amendments based on some meetings between, um, the company and the town back in, uh, May of twenty twenty-three. Aside from that, it's, everything is pretty much as is. And I believe is complete as far as was discussed between everybody about what needed to be impacted. So that's what's there.
Excellent, well, thank you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Murray, uh, and just for the benefit of the public, Mr. Murray here is here for Places Associates and is the consultant to the planning board, acting on the planning board's behalf.
So what we advise the planning board and the applicant is that there were quite a bit of, of discussion as to how to renew this special permit. And there was an, a dis, an early-on discussion about waiving a lot of the requirements because an awful lot of this has been answered. But it was my office's opinion that the board should not waive any requirement of an application. Uh, we suggested that the applicant take the original application and amend it where it needs to be changed, strike out anything, uh, from the original application that need to be modified, and resubmit, uh, the full fee, the full application form, uh, the certified butters list. And by doing that, the planning board isn't waiving any of your requirements. You're adhering to the requirements of the bylaw where they provide all the relevant information. But rather than have them recreate the wheel, they're simply updating it. Uh, so we didn't want it to be a burden either on the board nor the applicant just to simply renew. And in this way, uh, the board is not waiving any requirement. You have the full information required under the bylaw to be able to make an informed decision.
Thank you, and, uh, just to add to a point that Mr. Murray, uh, made, to clarify for the purpose of the public, Hubbardston's zoning doesn't have, uh, provisions for renewal of a special permit. It essentially looks at every special permit, even if it is essentially a renewal as a new special permit, uh, which is why this has become a, a discussion and why we encourage the, uh, the applicant to reach out to our consultant, uh, ahead of time about this. So are there any questions from, uh, the board? And then, um, go back to Mr. Murray. Francois, do you have any?
I, I, I do have a question. I mean, the reality though is, is that this operation has been in place, uh, and then, Mr. Berthold, if you would be so kind and just tell us since when you've been actually actively working, uh, at your facility?
Uh, actively working, well, I've been working on it. I started, you know, just basically, uh, getting organized there in March of twenty twenty-one, but we didn't commence operations until, oh, I believe it was September of twenty... Sorry, it was, um, oh, gosh. Because you get your final license and then you're, you don't actually commence operations for some time after. I believe, um, it was in January of twenty-two, or right around there is when we actually commenced.
Okay, and so the, the reason I'm asking that is, is the, the reality is, is that since then, uh, this has been operational and I, I'm assuming, uh, and you please confirm, you have, you have made, you have produced and, and, and you have, uh, produced not only material, but you've also, since, since the last time that I think we saw you, you've, you've added some additional facilities where you're doing some additional extract, which was that, uh, using the ICE facilities and so forth. The question I guess I have here is, is the, 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 how does, how should we fact, how does that factor in into this special permit? Because it's not like it hasn't happened. I'm just trying to understand how we need to factor that in as we review, uh, this, this special permit.
So that's a great question, um, and it's a very simple answer. So even though that...
Mr., oh, I apologize to interrupt you. The, the question is really more for our, for our board and, and, and the question really is, is more for Mr. Murray. Uh, I understand how you, how you perceive it. I, I'm just trying to understand it more from a procedural perspective.
Well, we, we also haven't acted on it.
Okay, well, well, hold on just, uh, just for a moment here. And, um, uh, I would like to encourage everyone to stick to specifically procedural questions. Uh, I do believe in this quest, in this case, we are talking about a procedural question here. And Mr. uh, Mr. Schneider is raising a question because there were, I believe we actually did those minor engineering changes. So I guess our question for Mr. Murray is going to be was, is that all properly accounted for in the application? I didn't review it specifically for that in terms of...
I'm sorry, you're breaking up, uh, uh, Chair.
Oh, sorry. I, I was, um, I was asking Mr. Murray, um, if he believed that the, uh, the subsequent engineering changes, which I believe what your question was about, were appropriately reflected in the updated application for a new permit that was like a renewal...
So it wasn't included. We haven't, like, it's, that was, I, I understand the question, but we never, um, moved forward with our provisional license for manufacturing. So there, you know, there were no, even though that was approved by the planning board, um, like, no building permits were, um, drawn, like, we, you know, we s, we're not allowed to manufacture things yet, so to speak, in the, in the eyes of the CCC. So, um, it's not, currently not part of the business at all. Like, we're not producing any extracts, we're not able to produce extracts yet. We haven't had the funding to build the infrastructure that was approved in that special permit, the amended special permit. So I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
So I appreciate that. And again, I think this really goes to the heart of, again, we've had, we've had a year plus or almost two years now where we've, we've had meetings with you and we have had meetings, uh, on, on that particular subject and, and other subjects as many of that regarding, say, for example, the odor control and so forth. What I'm trying to understand here is, is whatever agreements we had during that period of time, are we expecting now ourselves, and this question is really more for the board and for potentially here for Mr. Murray, to really understand how do we fact, if, do they have to be factored in as part of the application process so that we account for all of these past agreements that have taken place? And so we don't have to, A, repeat them again, or simply say, well, uh, may, may, maybe they're not relevant anymore when, when we, when we made, when we made significant amount of effort at, 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 uh, trying to address these issues?
Well, thank you, uh, thank you for that question. So, um, I would like to, to hold this line of questioning for a moment because I believe Mr. Murray is, uh, is itching to give us a report on his, um, initial review of the documents for completeness.
Right. So we did opine that we felt that the information that was provided was substantially complete, certainly enough for the board to, uh, open the public hearing. If you want me to address that question in specific, uh, I didn't see a request in here to include the ICE processing, but I wouldn't see it, again, the board determined it was a minor change. They haven't asked for that to be incorporated as part of this process, but I wouldn't see it. If they asked for it during a public hearing process, we could include it as part of the renewed, you're gonna have to issue a new special permit and you would include that process if they asked for it in your issued special permit. So it's readily and easily, I think, addressed.
Okay, so the way I hear this, the way I hear this here is, is that during, during the hearing itself, we can potentially utilize that as the place and the time to, to address these issues and, and, and make sure that these are, these are incorporated based on the requirements as, as the board sees fit, right?
Yeah, um, so just, uh, uh, just as a, a, a point of order, I, I don't wanna get deeply into procedural. The only thing that's on the, or really at all into anything that's non-procedural. All that's on the table today is whether or not the application is substantially complete because if the application is substantially complete, there's a sixty-five day deadline on us scheduling a public hearing.
Well, well, that's why I'm asking the question. I mean, I can, I can, that's why I am asking the question, you know, as an individual member. When I read this application or, and, 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 and give my, my vote on this here and, and my opinion on this here, I wanna make sure that I understand what I have, what I have to take into consideration. Or if, if I don't consider this here to be complete because I know the history behind this here, then, then I, then I would, I would raise that as a concern as, as not being complete.
Uh, well, I will take that question to, uh, to Mr. Murray and the applicant. Because as Mr. Murray had mentioned, um, his initial result and recommendation to the board is that the application is substantially complete. Now, it, it could possibly, um, be in the applicant's interest to amend what's filed to include some of that stuff again.
Quickly.
If he, if he, if it was his choice to do so.
No, no.
But, but in the eyes of whether or not the application is sufficiently complete under the bylaw is, um, is separate and distinct from whether or not it's comprehensively complete, um, substantially complete and comprehensively complete are two separate things.
And again, that's a matter of opinion. And I just wanna remind the Chair, there's only three individuals here today. So one no vote will, 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 will nix this here. And I just wanna make sure that we are...
Point of order, we have, uh, we also have the associate member present.
I did not, that, when, well, I apologize. I did not know that you have the associate member there. I thought there was only Erica, yourself, and myself, so I apologize.
No problem, um, and it's also a, um, a procedural matter and not the grant of special permit, so it's a simple majority instead of a supermajority.
Sounds good, okay. But still, I, 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 I wanted to clarify that and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm just simply saying that I wanna make sure that I have all of my facts so that we can, we can, we can make our decision appropriately based on the information that was provided. Thank you so much, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, no, I, I certainly appreciate the co, the question and it's, I agree that it's, it's a valid concern, um, in terms of the overall application, whether or not it's applicable to the, the standard. I believe as a matter of law isn't really up to debate, but, uh, but we can certainly have different opinions. With that said, any, any other questions from the board?
No.
No.
Any other, any other issues to report, Mr. Murray, or anything else of note in the review of the application?
No.
Okay, so with, uh, with that said, um, I think there, well, there's two things that we need to do. Uh, the first one would be to have a motion and a vote to determine, um, completeness. The next one would be, we need to make sure that there's a date that, with, that is within sixty-five days of when this was submitted to the town. Uh, that is going to be a good date for pretty much everybody. So, um, I guess unless the applicant or Mr. Murray has anything to add, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion for, to move, to decide on a public hearing date.
Uh, to accept the...
To accept the, um, completion.
Perhaps, uh, you would consider amending that to, uh, accept the application as being sufficient of, of what was the wording?
Substantially.
Substantially complete.
Uh, I'll make that motion to, uh, for this, I'm, I'm sorry.
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Uh, hearing a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, hearing a first and a second, uh, I'd like to call a vote. Uh, and let's go online first.
Uh, if you don't mind, I, I'm still looking at some parts of the document. If you wouldn't mind leaving me last, uh, it's just gonna take me a few more seconds. I apologize, but I wanna make sure that I have reviewed the items here.
All right, calling in the room first?
DAC I.
Russell I.
Uh, the Chair is I and we are holding a moment for the online vote.
Yeah, give me two more seconds here, just wanna see that I have all of the documents here. So Professor Schneider says I too.
Excellent, thank you. So, uh, the application is, uh, determined by the board to be substantially complete. The, uh, the next matter is, is we need to, uh, make sure we're all committing to a date that is high probability for, uh, for enough of the board to be at it. And, uh, I recognize we have two members that aren't present tonight, but I will, uh, I will hunt them down outside of the room. The other thing to consider here is we have two other special, excuse me, two other public hearings that we're gonna be talking about tonight. Um, and I very much expect us to receive, um, more special permits in the next couple of weeks, uh, specifically related to co-location. And I expect that we'll also be receiving another cannabis one. So it's gonna be a very busy couple of months for us. So, uh, with that said, was there, uh, Patricia, was there a date that you were already looking at?
I was, so sorry. So I, I was actually looking, so we don't have anything on the horizon for the second meeting of April. It's completely open. It would be up to you if that's too soon. If it's too soon, then I would suggest that very first week in May. But I was worried about the warrant and if that's too close to the warrant.
Uh, well, what was the, the date that...
March seventh is when I, it was punched into the office.
So March seventh, so that would put sixty-five days out. Uh, we also, we don't wanna delay for the applicant.
Right, so that's why I was trying to do it sooner rather than...
So the, the second meeting in April would be, it would be the eighteenth?
That's, I believe, that twenty-nine days into the application process, right?
Yep, that, that gets us within the sixty-five.
Yes.
And it gets you the, uh, the two concurrent weeks in order to be able to publish.
I would be publishing on Monday.
Okay, and Mr. Murray and, uh, excellent.
We can relax with you?
Noting, noting for the rec, I was about to say noting for the record, we have thumbs up from the applicant. Uh, how about the, uh, the rest of the board?
That's good.
It's okay with me.
All right, so we'll set that as the, uh, the hearing date and we'll publish it. Um, just from an administrative note, I would expect that to be a pretty well-attended hearing.
Yes, is this the current location or something that I size?
Could try to do it in the senior center if we wanted, if we think it's gonna be that well-attended, but I don't know what's going on over there on April eighteenth at this moment.
Well, even, even our more controversial ones lately, our more controversial meetings have still fit in this room. So I would prefer to schedule for here and only move over there if there was a particular issue.
What they've done in the past is they've opened the door. If it, like, blew up...
And we still check.
Yeah, and, well, but they'd opened the door and one time Ryan even had the TV on...
Yeah, right.
To go inside with it because the sound and video quality is much better in here.
I mean, we've had forty people in here.
Yeah, it's technically got fifty, I can come along with it.
I don't think that's, would be uncomfortable. Okay, so, uh, we are setting it for them. Excellent. All right, so moving down the agenda, uh, we have old business. So continuing discussion with Places Associates on rural bylaw.
Right.
So, um, I attended the plat, excuse me, I attended the Select Board meeting on Monday. Uh, so let, let's actually, let's take a little bit of matters not reasonably anticipated by Chair uh, at, at the same time. So on Saturday, I attended the, um, the citizens, Citizen Planner Training Cooperative Conference. And one of the events that was at the conference was put on by the head of the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, head of Municipal Review. I don't know if I got the title right, it's close enough. It's the person who runs the department that reviews bylaws from towns. And, uh, there was a rather lively conversation about solar bylaws and battery energy storage systems, uh, where, uh, I learned a whole bunch of things. Um, the, the, the first one being that, uh, that what we had put up and previously proposed as a planning board and, uh, a few months ago, we actually, um, we had a discussion on bringing it back up, was really pretty close to being possible to get through Attorney General Review. That there's, there's some changes we need to make to it and that one of the things that, uh, was an issue for it is that the Attorney General's Office, in this particular circumstance, is not a fact-finding body. So they really just look to the four corners of the document and they don't go out and do a bunch of independent research. Uh, and had we either within the bylaw or within a cover sheet of the bylaw, spent some time educating them about some of the issues that are unique to Hubbardston and why some of the requirements and restrictions we put in are reasonable given the fact that, uh, more than forty percent of our town is open to watershed, or rather, excuse me, is the watershed, uh, and that ultimately becomes the drinking water for three million people, that those are certainly things that they would have used to consider when determined whether or not our regulation was reasonable. We, it was a crazy time, there was a lot of transition. We didn't have regular people in either the office, uh, across the parking lot or the TA office. So stuff happens, you know, we learn, we move on. But with that information, um, and, uh, under the idea that, uh, a few months ago, we had agreed to take this on, I was at the Select Board meeting for the, um, uh, for the rural opportunity or the accessory bylaw, whatever we did for the final doubting on that, and, uh, asked if the board would entertain referring the battery energy storage bylaw back to us for research, analysis, and then to hold for public hearing. And the Select Board did do that. So we have two that are potentially on the table that could potentially make the cutoff for the town meeting. Uh, the first one is the rural opportunity that we've been working on for quite some time. Um, and then there's the best bylaw, which we have actually also been working on for quite some time, but thought we were gonna have to do a major one-eighty in order to, to change. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that there's two that we're currently looking at. So with that context, uh, I wanna go back to the, uh, the rural bylaw. There was an updated version that was, uh, presented by Places Associates.
It's in your binder.
It's in everybody's binders and was in the file and also emailed out to everybody reflecting the feedback that we have provided Places Associates the last time we've discussed this.
I also printed some out and...
I also printed some out and the changes on mine are in red.
So.
If anybody wants them.
Excellent, so I think we all have, well, um, Patricia was nice enough to also put ours in color.
Oh, perfect. Well done.
So, uh, the, the goal for tonight, uh, is, this has been presented to the Select Board, it has been referred back to us for research and to hold a, a public hearing, is to essentially do a speed run through this and find out if there are any, uh, potential problems or, uh, any, anything that we need to look at again before noticing this for a public hearing. Now, that doesn't mean that we need to have something that is complete and in its final evolved form. Uh, it just means we need to have something that is sufficient to put everybody on notice of what we're trying to do here in a way that is reasonable and legally sufficient. So, um, uh, thinking about the best way to eat this elephant and the fact that I don't wanna keep this here for hours, we've already rehashed this a few times. Mr. Murray, can you take us through kind of the highlights?
The first thing is, uh, we referenced, as was discussed, uh, the right-to-farm bylaw is, the, the reference to that is now included in the purpose. We redefined what a farm is to match the state's description, modified description of what a farm is if it's based upon land area. And, uh, acreage and the like, we added the burden of proof, the status of the farm shall be the applicant's responsibility because we don't want the building inspector to have any kind of that burden. And we cleaned up, uh, we removed from the advisory out of the bylaw, we'll just put that in, uh, application forms. So, all that was done, uh, and we changed, quite simply changed the uses allowed by right so that it's explicit that they are allowed by right. And being a little more clear of the by right uses requiring five or more acres. Uh, and.
Including mead.
Yep, I did add the word mead, yes. Yes, right, I highlighted it. Uh, and I, uh, added fermented alcoholic beverages. Not distilled, mind you, fermented. And, uh, prohibited uses, we just cleaned the, the wording up and added, uh, an additional category, commercial composting or waste disposal. And we referenced the rest of the zoning bylaw for enforcement, section four point one-four. The only thing that my office has not done is we haven't gone through section four allowable uses to make sure we're fully compatible with that, but we're working on that right now. So that anything that's allowed in here should be modified in the table of allowed uses so that we don't have a conflict. And we're, we're pretty close because Hubbardstead always has been a very positive right-to-farm, um, immunity, so most of the farming accessory uses are allowed in our bylaw. By right.
Yeah, there's. There are a couple of places where I think you can argue some of these are pretty close to what's in Article Four.
Yep.
But they're not spot on, so.
No, I mean, I see one right here, four point two, commercial greenhouses are allowed by a special permit.
Uh, in the updated version, they're allowed by right.
Well, I could, I might as update it as I could get online.
Yeah, the, the last, uh, Attorney General, um, Brownler stuff that came back has amendments for that, so yeah, they're, they're allowed by right.
Good.
It's a, a Davis protected use, so.
Yep. But, uh, I have to go through each one of these in each one of Article Four, just to, just to be cleaned up.
So, then, I guess the, the next, the things we need to figure out tonight are, and, um, and this question is for Patricia and for, uh, our town administrator who's also sitting here. When do we have to have the public hearing on this to send it back by?
I'd have to look into the legal ramifications of that and the legal findings, but within, within the month of April should be fine, because if we're, we're closing out, presumably the Select Board will close the warrant to all new warrant articles or ideas on the first of April, but these have already been accepted, so if we plan on meeting for the public hearing at the second meeting in April, that should be due time to get it all together by the second week of May.
Twenty-one days, I think it is.
What's that?
I think it's twenty-one days.
Yeah. It has to be published for twenty-one days before.
Yeah, um, I'll look into that, but, uh, that's what's sticking out in my mind right now, the number twenty-one percent case in, um.
Cause I'm only speaking to a warrant standpoint, I don't know what provisions on your side would have to be.
So, that's gonna force us for the eighteenth again, isn't it?
Is, it's gonna be a public hearing loser.
I mean.
Like dinner.
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna do it.
Do it.
What's, uh, what's the board's thoughts on this?
Is that too much?
Uh, well, if it's the only date we have to do, um, where, if we, if we don't hold this in time for this town meeting, we are gonna get hate mail about this and other boards and committees are also gonna send us copious amounts of hate mail. So, the only day we can make this happen is the eighteenth and also give a, um, give a little bit of time to do that review so that the version that's going up can be published. So, I guess we'd be asking the board, um, I mean, I actually think I could just do this as the chair, I don't think I have to have a board motion to do it, but getting board, um, I wouldn't do that, just to be clear. Making sure that I buy in from the board, uh, in order to, um, have Mr. Murray do that comparison. And then, once we have that comparison done against Article Four, put this up for publication to a public hearing for the, um, for the eighteenth. How does that sound to everybody on the board?
Fine.
Can you repeat the date again?
April eighteenth, it would be the, the same night we're here on the special permit.
It's gonna be a busy evening then.
Yeah, no kidding. At some point, and I don't think it has to be for the public hearing because the public hearing is something that's legally significant. At some point before the town hearing, the EDC had, and actually some of the folks who had volunteered for the original agricultural advisory committee, uh, had agreed to holding an information night on this. I don't, as a practical matter, that doesn't need to be part of the public hearing, the public hearing just is for us to have feedback and be legally sufficient, so, we would schedule sometime after that, but before the town meeting, to, to have that. The town meeting's the first week of June, so you would have the entire month of May to.
Do you wanna do it on the May fourth meeting, we'll do like another open listening session like you did the original, the first time?
Well, after the public hearing closes, it wouldn't be a listening session anymore.
I know.
We're telling you what a session.
No, with an inform, an informational session, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Would you like that for the May fourth meeting?
Yeah, let's, let's tentatively say that.
Okay.
I think that, or maybe even as a separate event. I don't know that that has to be a planning board meeting unless everybody wants to make that a planning board meeting.
No, in years past, sorry to interrupt, but in years past.
Just identify yourself with the record, please.
Katie Young, Ragged Hill.
In years past, uh, some of our TAs have had, like, an info night on different bylaws coming up to have, like, question and answers and, like, do it one-for-all. So, that way, whatever's gonna be at the town meeting, they could come and listen to it. And different board and committee members that have to do with things like this or whatever else, the best, anything else that's coming up, could sit in and be there as well to help get through some of them.
That was my intention as well, to have two public hearings on the warrant as a whole.
Okay, but we'll, we'll work with the TA's office on that then. And, well, schedule is a quite a board meeting. We're gonna have no shortage of stuff through the early summer, so anything we can get off of our meeting plate is better. Okay, um, I don't believe we need a vote on that. So, uh, unless anybody objects, we'll just call that what we're doing and move forward. So, uh.
Get you a revised or a, a cleaned up version next week, by Thursday next week.
Thank you. All right, so moving down on the list, we have an administrative matter, which is, invoice from Places Associate, invoice number five six six four dot zero one. I had read that wrong in the agenda, I, I was thinking it was for five thousand, but the invoice is for four forty-one. This is for, um, drainage system group on Vertex Towers, on the Vertex Tower project. And, um, I believe we are holding money in account on this.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're here to approve this for payment. So, everybody, please, take a look and, once you take a look, uh, entertain a motion. All right, how about a motion?
I'll make that motion for Places Associates invoice number five six six four point zero one in the amount of four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Excellent, yeah, hearing a first, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Uh, hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, calling a vote by roll call, starting online.
Steiger, aye.
Dak, aye.
And Monroe, aye. Uh, the invoice is approved.
All right, I think that paid for.
All right, so moving down the list, do we have a, a copy of the best bylaw?
I asked you if it was the Google Doc that's currently working, never texted him back, so I didn't print anything out.
All right.
But it is in the drive.
So, matters not reasonably anticipated by share, um, there is a version of the best bylaw that, uh, that is in the Google Drive that's available to everybody. This particular version, um, Francois worked on in order to pull it in line with, um, uh, what we believe the Attorney General will approve. The reason this is important, uh, and, uh, the reason that I would suggest that we should move forward with this is because when the Attorney General reviewed what we proposed, there were two articles, well, there were multiple articles that we submitted. One of the articles was the battery energy storage bylaw, she disapproved that bylaw. We were also submitting a bunch of editorial updates to our bylaws based upon the work that Mark had done in order to, uh, fix some compliance issues we had with the Davis amendments and also to make our bylaws consistent with what everybody thought they were voting on in meetings for the last twenty years. So, what the Attorney General's Office ended up doing was, in that article, there was language being added to our Article Four schedule of uses that said battery energy storage systems subject to the restrictions of Article twenty-six, I think it was. And what she did was she blue penciled that portion of that article to make battery energy storage systems allowable by right, subject to no restrictions in all zoning districts. So, that is a glaring hole in our zoning and this is super timely because there are a bunch of major battery energy storage system projects kicking off. There is a major one in Rotlin that's gonna reach over into Paxton. There's a huge one in Carver, uh, there's a huge one in Medway, yeah, Medway, I believe it is. And, uh, there are currently folks going out citing other locations to, uh, to try to put these. So, as it stands right now, it's an allowable by use right, not even subject to site plan review if it's not attached to a solar facility, and somebody could just come in and get a building permit for a gigawatt system, which is not at all what we intended to do, it's not at all what the voters of Hubbardstead intended to approve. And I believe it, pers, this is a personal opinion, not speaking as the chair. My personal opinion is it was a wild overstep of the region authority that the Attorney General's Office has. So, in an ideal world, I would like to have a series of meetings to, um, to update this more. But we don't have that in order to be able to try to get this onto the warrant. So, combined with what we just learned on Saturday, um, the recommendation to us from the Select Board and the giant gaping hole that we have in our zoning that we need to fix, I would like the board's blessing, um, to develop this a little bit more and based upon what the previous version was and based upon the changes that we need to make and also hold this for a public hearing. And at the public hearing, we can have the, the opportunity to, um, debate this further and, and clean up some of the provisions, but what we're proposing is substantially similar. And, um, it is something that we also could just schedule, but I don't wanna be doing stuff that substantive without checking with the board first. So, I would, I would recommend that we, um, uh, if, if everybody wants, it's currently in the drive to take a, a quick look at, um, if we need to get, uh, some versions printed to make sure that everybody understands what we're talking about here. I'm also happy to answer whatever questions people have for as long as we need and Francois is, uh, also here to answer questions about it cause this has been an issue that's been, um, well, he's done a lot of the drafting and it's deeply important to him that we get it right, so.
And, and, and to the chair, a quick, uh, point of information, uh, and maybe this is to Patricia. The version in, uh, that you're referencing, that is under the Planning Board's best two folder?
Um, yes, in the drive for today's meeting, I tried to put it in, but it was like, oh, you can't move this Google Doc. So, yes, it is in the best two folder in the Google Drive, um, and it is the, the Google document, not the Carver best bylaw.
Yeah, and there's, there's still some notes here, um, so the, the office is going to, um, need to work on this, uh, a little bit to clean up some of these questions where there's still, some of these sections where there's still questions. But if we. still, some of these sections where there's still questions. But if we, if we don't get this on the schedule, we're in danger of missing it, and we're certainly in an unfortunate position here. So if, if it, if it makes sense to the board, I would also like to schedule this for a public hearing on the same night, subject to the sections that still need to be filled in by the office, and that we'll just have Patricia coordinate with some additional language that I have from the conference, and with Francois, who was the original drafter of this. So, that's, that's roughly where we're at with that, and like I said, I would, I would rather kick this around for, for many meetings, but we have a gaping hole, and we need to, we need to plug it before somebody takes advantage of it. So, is there anybody who has a wild objection to that?
Okay.
And just noting, for the record, everybody nodded tepidly that, that unfortunately, that's what we have to do.
Snacks. How do you get it off? All gonna be on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, friggin' snacks.
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna polish that up, and we're also gonna publish it for, for public hearing for the eighteenth.
Excellent.
Excellent. Also, under matters not reasonably anticipated by Chair, and we're gonna need to think hard about where we do this, in terms of our schedule, maybe the next meeting, because there's a big gap between. We rescind the Open Space Recreation Plan by Open Space, it is many hundreds of pages long. But, it's also really good. They, they independently calculated a whole bunch of stuff that MRPCs looked at, and they did a whole bunch of the mapping work, all fresh in GIS. So, instead of just working with information that's been a hand-me-down, where people have just kind of trusted what's been on file, this is a fresh look at everything. So, in addition to it being what would ordinarily be kind of a perfunctory document, I think this particular document is actually pretty insightful, and is just worth our time as policymakers to, to really take a good look at. We're also required by statute to approve it, so we do have a legal obligation to look at it, i- in addition to it also just being the right thing, because they, they did a good job. They, they really did. So, that's been distributed to everyone on the board by email, and, did we, Patricia, did we already talk about scheduling a date?
Yes, I have that on the agenda for the, the next meeting, which is going to be April third.
Yep. So that's, that's up for April third, and it's, it's, it's a good policy document, it, it really is worth the time. And it's worth looking at the discussion about the development restrictions, and also just some of the, the calculations about available land, the calculations for, well, I'm losing the term of art, it's been a long day. The calculations about developable land, the map, the upper protection zone, a lot of that's all in there in a very approachable, comprehensive way, but yeah, it's long. But it is our obligation to approve it. I don't think I'm missing anything else under the reasonably anticipated by Chair. Oh, also, under not reasonably anticipated by Chair, we received a tree complaint, but there's-
No review on that.
There's currently an ongoing discussion about that, from the office, because I think the tree warden might have made a determination on that, but there's some question about where that fits in, in terms of legal authority, so the office is gonna look into that a little bit more, and, and then report back to the board, as, on to the status of it, because obviously, we, we take the scenic road bylaw pretty seriously, and it's one of the few places where the town has issued money fines for bylaw violations in recent history. So, that will be potentially coming back up. That is it now, right? All right, so with that, anybody have any additional public comments? Any further comments or questions from the board? Excellent. I guess I just wanna throw one final comment, that CPTC training was awesome. It was, it was a pain to make time for, but I was very happy I went, because there was a lot of really good stuff I got out of it. I also got some really great special permit flowchart documents, and important materials, that, that are gonna be very useful for the office, for putting together some of our administrative materials, so. All right, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hearing a first, and a second?
Yeah, I second, I second the motion.
Hearing a first and a second, not debatable. Calling a vote, starting online.
Start your eye.
DAC eye.
And the chair is eye, we are adjourned.